I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of February 18, 2020. Please hold the role. Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Moats?
Here.
Councilmember Soto?
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Here.
And Madam Mayor, Patino?
Here.
The first order of business this evening is a proclamation, and I will be making that Whereas the Future Farmers of America, FFA, and agricultural education provide a strong foundation for the youth of America and the future of food, fiber, and natural resources systems; and whereas FFA promotes premier leadership, personal growth, and career success among its members; and whereas agriculture education and the FFA ensure a steady supply of young professionals to meet the growing demands in the science, business, and technology of agriculture; and whereas the FFA motto, "Learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, living to serve," gives direction of purpose to these students who take an active role in succeeding agricultural education; and whereas FFA promotes citizenship, volunteerism, patriotism, and cooperation. Now therefore, I, Alice Empatino, Mayor of the City of Sanria, do hereby recognize the Week of February 22 through February 29, 2020, as Future Farmers of America Week in the City of Sanria, and encourage awareness of the program and its opportunities for the youth. In witness thereof, I have heretofore signed, set my hand, and have caused the seal of the City of Sanria to be affixed this 18th day of January, 2020. And before I give out the resolution, I just want to make a comment that there's 2% of which our growers, our farmers, feed the rest, the 98% of us, but both of my sons went through the FFA program at Sanria High and were both on ag mechanics teams that won the state finals and went on to nationals. And I just really can't say enough how much FFA does to build so much in citizenship in, and I know, Ms. Soto, you belong to FFA Pioneer, and helps to build so much in a person's character. And so I just applaud these young people that go through the program, and they become such, they are able to be so articulate when they get up to speak in anything, and the competitiveness that they go through in the different areas of FFA. So I just applaud all these FFA students. And I read in the paper all the time when they're achieving things, whether it's in the dairy, whether it's in livestock, and then at the fair that we have during the summer when they compete with their animals. But my hat goes off to all of you FFA students. Thank you so much.
I just wanted to say a big thank you to the City Council. It is because of your support, your continuing support throughout all the years that Santa Maria FFA and the Agriculture Department at Santa Maria High School is always so successful with all our competitions, whether it's through our animals or through our speaking events or judging events. So I want to give a big thank you and a thank you for all your support throughout the years.
Thank you. Our next order of business is a retirement resolution, and City Manager still will be making the presentation.
I am the Mayor and the City Council. We're honored tonight to recognize the career of Tommy Crakes with this resolution. And I'll read it. It's a resolution of the City Council of the City of Santa Maria commending Battalion Chief Thomas Crakes for his 36 years of dedicated service to the City of Santa Maria. Whereas the Crakes family has served the Santa Maria Fire Department since 1911, and Thomas Crakes continued that service. And whereas he has been a valued member of the city team since 1984 as a Call firefighter for the Public Works Department. In 1988, was hired full-time as an engineer in training promoted to fire captain in 1999 and battalion chief in 2015. And whereas he supervised the acquisition and buildup of new fire apparatus.
Including the new tractor-drawn Ariel Lavatory, assisted with the upgrade to the new dispatch system and the addition of mobile data computers in fire vehicles, along with supervising A-Shift personnel and maintaining fire department facilities. Whereas Tom is a member of the Los Padres Incident Management Team and has served as a logistics section chief on numerous wildland fires. And whereas Tom retired on December 20, 2019, and the Santa Maria City Council wishes to recognize him for his dedication and contributions to the city. And now therefore, it's resolved by the City Council of the City of Santa Maria that Battalion Chief Tom Crakes is recognized and commended for his dedicated service to the City of Santa Maria and wish him and his family well in their future endeavors adopted today. Congratulations.
I didn't prepare anything to speak, so Mayor, City Council, I'd like to thank you. Thank you for 36-plus years for me. I actually, instead of FFA, I went into work ag, and I worked two summers for the school or for the city while I was going to high school. Even earlier on, the city's a great place to work. It's a great familyhood. Without the cooperation and partnerships that we build among each other, we could not survive. So I'm only made it my time in my 36 years because of my fellow firefighters, administration, both in the fire department and the city. So this is a big thank you to all of you for being there, even the ones that have retired that helped show the way and pave the way, and hopefully I did the same for the new ones coming in. Thank you very much and have a great day, and remember, take care of each other. Thank you.
And Tommy, before you leave, but we may not let you go, because I need to have a motion on this first, so.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Second. It's been moved in second. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll? Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much, Tommy.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to comment that I was, a couple of years ago, I was fishing in Mexico off of Guadalupe Island, and I had no idea who this guy was that was there. He was civilian clothes as I was. And we started talking, and he ended up asking me where I was from and this and that, and I told him, of course, Santa Maria. And he brought up this employee that he knew from Santa Maria, but he couldn't remember the guy's name. And he went on, I still didn't know he was a fireman. I had no idea. And he ended up telling me he was a fireman, but he couldn't remember. He wanted to praise this employee. And then he went on to say that he was involved with these big fires out in the forest and whatnot, and then mentioned that he was dealing with a guy from the City of Santa Maria that dealt with the issuing equipment, and we decided it was Tommy Crakes. And he had to, he had to make sure that I knew that this guy was an outstanding city employee. By then, he knew I was on the City Council and whatnot, but I said, "Thank you very much." And I've never shared that story with Tommy or any of the firemen. I didn't know whether they'd believe me or not. But it was just amazing to have this gentleman select you, and we're literally hundreds and hundreds of miles away, and we run into each other at the back of a tuna fishing boat, so. So you left an impression.
Chief Champion, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for this opportunity and for recognizing Chief Crakes. It's truly an honor to have known Tommy for my entire career, to work side by side with him, and to be here today celebrating his career. They say you want to surround yourself with good people, people that are smarter than you and people that know more than you. And Tommy, you certainly have done that in numerous areas in the department. You have, as read by Council, by the resolution, in that you've had such an impact on our department in so many areas, and I'm feeling it today. The day you left, we were trying to figure out how to fill the gap and the void. So Tommy, it's all about relationships. You care about this community, you care about our department, and more than that, you care about the men and women of the fire department. So thank you for your support, thank you for your service. You will be missed. We have the memories, a lot of memories, a lot of stories, and I won't go into those. But we're going to celebrate your retirement on March 14, and we'll have a good time. Thank you again for everything, Tommy.
Thank you. Yes. The next item on the agenda is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak for them.
Madam Mayor, we have two requests to speak. Two requests? Thank you. The first is Mark Ganoe, and then second is Sarah McDonald, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Madam Mayors, City Council, me and a few of the other trucking companies here locally in Santa Maria, it's just fitting that the FCA is here. We haul produce out of the area. We've been in trucking business for, I've been 12 years as owner-operator, and we're having issues with our trucks on Hanson Way. Someone wants, if it's the homeless that have their encampment there, we've been there for a number of years, but the homeless have moved their motorhomes there and given their trash, and I think that's the issue that we're having. But now they're proposing that they make that street no overnight parking whatsoever, which would force us, I guess, out of town now. We've been forced, we've been moved from the, we're parking town to the city limits, out just at the limits, and now they're proposing we move somewhere else again. I don't know what the resolution would be for the homeless encampments, but I would, you know, feel that, I would just oppose the making that street and no parking overnight or having a height limit. That's where we park our trucks, that's close to our fields where we pick up our produce and to ship to the market. Like I said, I've got a number of trucking companies here with me tonight just to show that it's not just one person opposing the.
Okay. Mr. Stillwell, we can deal with that, can't we? Handle that? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If you want to conclude public comment with Sarah McDonald, we probably know what she'll say, though, but.
Okay.
But we can come back then, and we can have a short staff report explaining. This is item 3F that the gentleman's referring to on the consent calendar, and we can give a little bit more information on that for the council's.
Okay, thank you. Sarah McDonald?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, and staff. I'm Sarah McDonald. I'm a member of the Observer Car, and I'm here to observe your meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
From the Observer Car, the League of Women Voters, 100th birthday.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, we can describe item 3H, or 3F, I'm sorry, for the.
Okay, we'll pull that. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion, and these items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Does anyone have items they wish to pull?
Yes, Madam Mayor, item 3D and 3F.
Anyone else?
None.
Okay.
3D is just an extension.
Abstain, okay.
Yeah, I'm going to abstain from that one.
On warrants, okay.
And then 3F is this gentleman that just came up.
Go ahead, 3F?
Yes.
Okay. 3F? Can we read it? Go ahead and read it into the record, Madam Clerk.
It's an adopted resolution approving a limited time no-stopping zone on Hanson Way and White Court.
Okay.
Honorable Mayor.
Ms. McKeown?
Oh, sorry. Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, I'm Kevin McKeown, Public Works Director. This item would, as mentioned, establish limited time parking zones on Hanson Way and White Court. The time period would be from midnight to 4:00 AM. There'd be no parking allowed during those periods. The request is due to complaints along those two streets for large vehicles, RVs, that have been parking there. This was reviewed by the Traffic Committee and recommended approval, and it's for your consideration tonight.
Okay.
It appears in the agenda report that the complaints were numerous recreational vehicles and camping trailers, period.
Yeah. Mr. Stillwell?
Yeah, we can explain a little bit more of how the, yeah, as the Councilman Waterfield mentioned, this was a result of complaints we received in the neighborhood with oversized vehicles generally. It was a combination of both commercial vehicles and recreational vehicles. And as Kevin, as Director McKeown mentioned, this was something reviewed by the Traffic Committee, looking at different options of how to resolve the issue. The option presented tonight is to limit overnight parking. And that, there were some other options considered, but this one, I think, would be the most expeditious to resolve that issue. And Kevin, you want to talk about other options we have available? We did list some alternatives. We've looked at other limited parking schemes in the area. We could go to permit parking. We're not recommending that at this point due to the volume there. And as you, the council may recall, this has been an issue in that neighborhood or that area that we've had a few council items on now to limit parking, as we have an ongoing challenge with the oversized vehicles, primarily with the refrigerator units parked in the adjacent to the residential neighborhoods overnight and causing disturbances due to noise primarily.
Okay, so that, go ahead. Ms. Waterfield?
Well, then, I guess this was written incorrectly, because it doesn't say anything about commercial vehicles, just recreational vehicles and camping trailers. So, you know, it's not an impact, apparently, from what the staff report states.
Yes, I recall also the complaint was regarding trash that's left behind and illegal dumping out of the RVs into the street. So it was, seemed to be focused on people living on the street was the complaint that we were addressing.
So is there a way that we can just eliminate the recreational vehicles and camping trailers? That would probably eliminate the dumping and the trashing, and then allow the commercial vehicles there to see if that will suffice the neighborhood?
If I may, we would need to significantly study that, because in essence, we already have a no camping overnight that we currently utilize for this sort of thing. We did have both complaints, the refrigerator trucks having ongoing noise, as well as, so notwithstanding what, when they talked about it at the Traffic Committee, they had discussions of both issues. And to say that you are differentiating between commercial vehicles and potentially private vehicles that are similarly sized might be seen somewhat as discriminatory. I wouldn't want to comment on that without additional study, but if you wanted us to go back and relook at this, we could.
Absolutely, because I'm looking at what's in front of me.
I understand.
And so, and then we have a gentleman, and we have some businesses here that would be a hardship, so we need to maybe, if you can look at that and come back and talk to the business owners, if you can exchange phone numbers and see what we could find that would work. And I'm not sure if there could be a solution or not, but at least we can explore it a little bit more in depth.
Dr. Moats?
Yeah, I wasn't exactly clear on why do truck drivers with commercial vehicles want to park in that area overnight? They want to sleep in their vehicles, or what?
I mean, the adjacent commercial uses are essentially 24-hour uses, right? There's, so they're, during that heavy harvest season, there are trucks coming and going at most times of the night. They show up at various times, so it is a bit of a queuing area in that general area around the refrigeration production units.
Okay, but the truck drivers are all awake in their cabs, waiting their turn to go in and get produce?
Not necessarily. I mean, so the trucks will arrive when they arrive, and there's designated spaces on-site for them to park, but during the heavy season, there isn't sufficient space for them to be able to park in those spots.
So mostly, it's a noise issue that they.
Primarily, the complaints we heard were the refrigeration units on the trucks, right?
I, if it's, did you want to pull this right now? Is that what you're?
Yeah, why don't we just?
And study this, because I really think that there's some need for accommodation for, we are an ag area, and I really think we need to accommodate what's going on here. Okay.
Okay. So.
Okay.
For the purposes of a motion.
Yes.
With respect to this item, it would be appropriate to direct staff to relook at the issue as a motion.
Okay.
Okay.
So, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for staff to relook at the establishment of a limited time no-stopping zone on Hanson's Way and White Court. Is that the?
Are to relook at 3F?
Yeah, 3, yeah, 3. 3F of the, of the consent calendar.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll? Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye.
Okay, we'll pull that. Thank you, Mr. Ganoe, and they will be contacting you.
And then I can't make a motion on 3D, because I need to abstain myself on that.
Okay. Can I have a motion on the consent calendar?
For 3D.
So moved. So moved.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll? Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Abstain.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar without 3D and 3F.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll? Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to item number four. Next item is an appointment. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider making one appointment to the Block Grants Advisory Committee. And I'll be the one giving the report. You want me to just?
Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, the request before you this evening is to make one appointment to the Block Grants Advisory Committee for a term ending in July 2022. We had one new application from Angel Lopez.
Okay, is Mr. Lopez here? Ms. Soto, did you have a nomination?
I do, Madam Mayor. My nomination is for Angel Lopez.
Thank you. So I accept the nomination and make a motion to appoint Angel Lopez to the Block Grants Advisory Committee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any, okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll? Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
And Mr. Lopez, thank you very much for volunteering. They're going to keep you very busy. But thank you. The next order of business is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider a recommendation of the Planning Commission to approve zoning text amendment, GEPZ 2018-0006, for limited commercial uses within the defined light manufacturing areas.
Thank you. And the staff report is to be given by Community Development Director, Ms. Rang.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. This is a zoning text amendment for limited commercial uses at the former Costco site. Here is a photo of the project site that we're talking about, south of Stoll on the west side of Bradley, as outlined in the yellow lines. It's, there are existing businesses located to the north, Michael's, Bevmo, Trader Joe's, and this also includes the Carl's Jr. Restaurant to the east. Some background on this property, the former Costco was approved in the M1 zoning district. The M1 zoning district is the light industrial zone, and back then, Costco was considered a wholesale warehouse, and so this was not approved in a commercial zone, but in a light industrial. And the property continues to be in a light industrial zone, and it was brought to our attention that this property could be, should be considered for commercial uses, but given the existing zoning, there are some restrictions with that. This request is a strategy to maximize the flexibility to accommodate both industrial and commercial uses in support of a large vacant building and site. This is the existing language. I'm not going to read the entire text, but you can tell that in the M1 zoning district, there was language specifically designed to accommodate this particular use. It says wholesale, retail, warehouse sales over 80,000 square feet within 1,000 feet of Highway 101. And this particular language would exclude other types of commercial uses. So what we're trying to do with this request is to expand the definition a little bit, and this is the proposed language. You can see what's being striked out, the 80,000 square feet. So instead of that, it would just say wholesale and/or retail sales as a generic term. And it's also, in terms of distance from the 101, we've added 101 and the Stoll-Roe interchange. We did that, the Planning Commission added that language, because there were other light industrial properties near the 101 that could have been included, and they wanted to make sure that it was just this particular former Costco site that would be affected. And this is essentially the request, to modify the text in the light industrial zone to allow for additional commercial uses. One more note, there's, this text for the allowance of the commercial uses would be moved from conditional to permitted. And what that means is that should there be a tenant that were to come and to occupy the former Costco site, there wouldn't be a public hearing before the Planning Commission. It would just be an approved use. And this is intended to simplify the process for anyone looking to occupy the space. So with that said, again, this is a map showing the land uses for the area. Again, this is still M1 light industrial, and it's surrounded by commercial uses. This, again, this is not a rezone to commercial. It maintains the existing M1, just expands the ability to accommodate for commercial. This is the Planning Commission's recommendation, that the City Council accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission and introduce an ordinance for first reading and continue to the next meeting for second reading and adoption, amending the zoning code for limited commercial uses within defined light manufacturing areas by adding chapters 12-15 M1 Light Manufacturing District and new section 12-1503, and repealing section 12-1505 of the Santa Maria Municipal Code. We do have representatives representing this particular property. Should there be additional questions, and this concludes staff's presentation.
Are there any questions from the Council for Ms. Rang?
I do, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Are there any possible negatives to us making this amendment?
Madam Mayor and Councilwoman Soto, I don't think so. This is, this is an effort to try to give us as wide of a range of possibilities to fill this site and to fill this vacant building.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Is the applicant here? Would they like to make any comments? Would they like to make any comments?
Oh, well, maybe we have some comments now.
Ms. Tamora?
Good evening. My name is Lori Tamora with Urban Planning Concepts. I'm here with Nick Tompkins, who has brought this request forward to the staff and to the Planning Commission and now to the City Council. We spent quite a bit of time trying to be as creative as possible to help encourage the infill of this site. Obviously, it's a very prominent area, and we'd like to see good retail activity as well as the option for other uses. It's a big building. And so the fact that we were able to come up with this option makes it much more viable for a diversity of uses on that site. So we thank both the staff, Planning Commission, and we hope you will agree and approve this request tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Waterfield?
You know, I'm really excited about this, but I have one request, that should you get a wonderful tenant in there that brings in just gobs of business, if you could do a right turn only out of Costco onto Bradley? Because it's just crazy with the way they have it set up now.
It's not like that idea hasn't been thought of before. I think even a discussion with David Baez about six months ago, there was the talk about how when Michael's and all of those other retail uses went in there, is there some way to get access straightly, straight off of Bradley? And so we will work with staff. We will work with staff.
She's been asking this question for years.
When you were the Planning Commissioner.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Cordero?
Thank you. Lori, has there been any that you know of people questioning the old Costco site that this verbiage change might have enticed them to consider something? Do you know of anything that we might have missed as a result of this restriction that we've had on there?
Since Costco moved into the other location, I think there's been a lot of interest in that building. Unfortunately, the way the previous ordinance was written, it kind of went into sort of a procedural vortex. And by doing this, it's going to help streamline anyone who's interested in coming into that building.
Mr. Tompkins?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Nick Tompkins. The...there was one specific tenant who is no longer a viable option right now, but who was adamant that they couldn't go, and they were a great tenant, but that they wouldn't go with where they had to have their name brought forward in a public hearing to be brought out. And kind of a little bit from a competitive perspective, they have a competitor who follows around a little bit and occasionally follows a secret challenge and holds them up for a year or two. So it becomes very expensive for them. I think the city would have been really excited about them. And there are a couple of others that are like that, and this kind of allows some flexibility and for us to be able to act promptly if the right opportunity, if we can find the right opportunity, we can react quickly and make commitments that otherwise we couldn't. So that was it.
Thank you. I think that answers my question. Thank you very much.
Any other questions from the dais?
I'm not going to tell you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any correspondence?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Any requests to speak?
No. So we would open the public hearing and then close it with no requests to speak.
I'll bring this motion back to the Council for discussion and a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to introduce an ordinance for the first reading of the zoning text amendment for limited commercial uses within the defined light manufacturing area and continue to the next meeting for the second reading in the adoption amending zoning code, GPZ 2018-0006, for limited commercial uses within defined light manufacturing areas by adding to chapter 1215, M1 Light Manufacturing District, new section 1215.03A15, and repealing section 1215.05F of the Santa Maria Municipal Code.
I'll second that, Madam.
I have a motion and a second on the floor to introduce the ordinance for the first reading and continue to the next meeting for the second reading and adoption amending the zoning code as indicated. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll? Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
The next order of business is another public hearing item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider approving the Measure A five-year local program of projects for fiscal years 2020 through 2025.
And the staff report will be given by Public Works Director, Mr. McCune.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. This is an annual report that you get for Measure A. This is a requirement of the ordinance where we adopt a program of projects. I have a short presentation tonight where we'll briefly review Measure A and its role providing critical funding for the city's road infrastructure, go over history of the sales tax, review how Measure A fits into the overall city budget, and then review the five-year program of projects. Some examples of how we use Measure A in Santa Maria, largely operations and capital. Some examples would be day-to-day work, doing signing and striping, asphalt repair, concrete repairs, and our annual pavement treatments such as slurry and chip seals. Measure A is a sales tax. It was approved by the voters in Santa Barbara County. Santa Barbara County has a long history of supporting transportation sales tax. 2008, they renewed a half-cent tax called Measure A. This was a renewal of something that was approved in 1989 called Measure D. Every community in Santa Barbara supported Measure A by more than 2/3 required. Santa Maria, it was 79% approval. In addition to setting the tax rate, the voters also approved an investment plan in the ordinance. This plan has three broad categories, starting with the named projects. These were projects that were shown to the voters that they could vote on and get in their communities. Examples are 101 widening in the South County and 101 and 135 interchange in the North County. And those projects are taken right off the top before anything else is funded. The remainder of the funds is used to fund, directly fund cities and counties for their road maintenance. And there's a North County program and a South County program. Each city and county takes their list of proposed projects to their boards every year, and we call that the program of projects. And we'll be reviewing Santa Maria's program of projects tonight. This shows how Measure A fits in with our budget compared with other road funds. It's one of the road funds that we have. As you can see, Measure A is the largest funding of our budget at 42%. Some of the other ones out there, maintenance of effort is something that is funded through the general fund using the...well, general fund, and the district funds for the maintenance district. That's a large part of that. Other examples are gas tax, SB1, that was approved by the legislator a few years ago, and LSTP. So this is our proposed program of projects. I will go over this briefly. There's a lot of data here, and I won't get into the details unless you'd like me to. It starts at the top with the revenues. SB-CAG estimates a strong economic performance for the next five years. You can see the revenues increasing every year. It is interesting, if I can turn on the little...let's see if I can do this. There we go. It is interesting that the revenues drop in this last year, and that's because SB-CAG is selling a bond to fund the 101 project in the South County, and the principal and interest payments, the debt service starts in this year. So again, I mentioned that those named projects come off the top first. That's why our apportionment goes down in that year. So it isn't because they're expecting a decrease in sales tax. It's because we have some extra expenses that are shared countywide. So let's go through the expenditure plan. First category is the roadway maintenance and improvements. This is the largest of our funding sources. Examples include, this captures the operation and capital cost for roadways and bridges. And those, it would be salaries and equipment and materials and all the things it takes to maintain our roads. Next large category is traffic safety and signage. Signage, stripings, streetlights, traffic signal maintenance, those are all the categories that would be spent under this fund or this category. Next one is highway improvements. We're planning on...we're doing work on 101 and Main. These are both planning and design tasks. So 101 and Main, we think, is...we need to start planning for upgrades at that location. The very first step to that is doing a project study report. It's a requirement of Caltrans to even program what those improvements would be. So we've proposed a project study report for that intersection. The city also has some street skate upgrades they'd like to do at Main and Broadway, so we've programmed some money to do upgrades at that intersection in this...I think that was in year two, as I recall. No, year one, 2021. And then the last two categories are the alternative transportation categories. This is also a requirement that the voters had when they approved Measure A. These are projects that make Santa Maria more pedestrian-friendly. Projects include sidewalk, bike lanes, and curb ramps. And then we also partner with a local nonprofit to provide youth and adult bicycle education. This is SB Bike is the nonprofit. They do classes in elementary schools, and they also operate BC Centro in town on Oak Street, where you can take your bike to the facility for a nominal fee, and they'll help you maintain it and learn how to maintain your own bike. So it's a really great program. So excited to partner with them on that. And I think at that point, I'll pause and see if there's any questions.
Any questions from the Council? None? Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have any written correspondence or requests to speak?
Madam Mayor, we did receive one written correspondence from Lori Tamora with Urban Planning Concepts, asking that three projects pertaining to traffic be moved up on the list. Specifically, those projects are Highway 101, 135 interchange, Highway 101, Betaravia interchange, and Highway 101, McCoy interchange. Copies of the letter were provided to Council at the dais and uploaded onto the city's website. And we do have one request to speak.
Okay. Okay. Lori Tamora?
Good evening, Lori Tamora with Urban Planning Concepts. I've also have been appointed to the Measure A Oversight Committee and have been attending those meetings annually for the last two years. And we had a meeting on Thursday to go over not only the 10-year report, which I'll give you a little sneak preview. It has the street skate or the open streets as they're covered. But the 10-year plan will be adopted by SB-CAG in March. But there's also another project that's happening, and that is the requirement to do a five-year extrapolation forward on when projects are going to be done over the next five years. What are their plans for funding? The 2015 plan had Broadway, 135, and 101 out to 2028 to even start designing that project. That was in the 2015 plan. Your City Council is already funded to start the project study report and the environmental review in December. So this request, your request, which is a five-year window, needs to move up the Broadway 101 interchange into this five-year request, because you're already spending money planning for that interchange. This interchange is critical. How many people have been on Main Street at 101 in the morning or in the evening? How about Donovan, which backs up all the way for a mile down 101? The Broadway 101 interchange should be the highest priority for the North County to alleviate that traffic on 101 for the city of Santa Maria, for all those people on the north end of town that have to be sticking their back into the cars on the 101. We need to tell SB-CAG that this is a high priority for the city, and it should be in this resolution. The next project is the hook ramps for Betaravia 101 need to be a high priority for the city of Santa Maria. I grant that the McCoy 101 interchange could probably be deferred to the next window, but the planning and the study for that should be happening as part of our update to the general plan. So it should be happening, at least the PSR should be happening during the update of the general plan to see if it's warranted or not. All three of those projects need to be moved from 2028 to 2021 so that we can get started on these major infrastructure improvements now. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Waterfield.
Lori, when you talk about the Highway 101, Betaravia, what are you talking?
The...Kevin, I don't want to step over you, but the proposal is to do a hook ramp around the mobile station so that people going east don't have to go across the interchange to get onto 101. And that's about a $2.5 million effort. That's budgeted in the Measure A funds.
Say that again, because my mind is not seeing what you're saying. Yeah. It goes around the mobile station?
The mobile station.
Not where it is right now, but it's further...
Right.
To the east of it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So it's to alleviate the traffic that tries to get across and makes their northbound, you know, where the signal is now, going northbound. You can stay on Betaravia and do the hook ramp around and come back onto...
So then those that are on Betaravia going north, they would just do the normal where it is right now?
Exactly. Exactly. And it's an important project. It's been on the books since this was adopted.
Yeah, no, it has been.
And just as Broadway, 135, and 101 have been. But we need to front-load these. We need to move them forward. That's my request, and I hope the City Council will agree.
That's a $2 million project?
Two and a half.
Two and a half, okay.
Mr. Cordero, you had a question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Lori, I think what I'm hearing you say, and I saw what I recall from the past, is there would essentially be two northbound onramps to 101. One where you're actually turning south off of Betaravia, like is out at Union Valley Parkway, and then one that is currently there, so you're turning north off of Betaravia. So there would be, so you could get on there twice, twice as fast, basically, as it currently is. Is that right?
Imagine what you do at Donovan going south. You have two options to get into that. One of them when you're going east, and one of them when you're going west. And that's what they're proposed...that was one of the projects proposed for 101 in Betaravia. And I don't think the city has, should be, holding out for eight more years to even start planning for those projects. It needs to be done now, because it's going to take five years to build these projects based on working with Caltrans and everything else. So let's start those projects now. Thank you.
Dr. Moats, you had a question?
Well, Councilwoman Waterfield kind of asked it, but I know it's premature to discuss the McCoy and 101 interchange, but is there any conceptual plan for that right now? I'm sure there is. But what is it?
Okay, so first of all, the 101 McCoy interchange is a Measure A project. There's money being collected every single day for that interchange. That interchange is supposed to go under 101. So it's...until we get a change to the ballot measure, we're still talking about building that interchange. That was planned for, designed. Land was reserved already through the Bradley Squares projects for the onramps and offramps. So it is on the books. Whether it gets built in 2025 or 2030, based on what needs are, it should be part of this update to the general plan to at least study it to see if it's needed now.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question for staff. Is there a reason why these projects were not included in our five-year local program of projects report?
Yes, that's, that's an astute observation. So the, I remember I talked about there are three categories of, of projects in Measure A. The named projects are the first projects. Those are the ones that we've been talking about, Ms. Tomora is talking about. They're named in the ordinance. The voters approve those as a part of the vote. That is not the program of projects. So, so that is funded off the top, out of the regional pot. So we don't, we don't program those funds tonight. We are programming our, our local road maintenance funds tonight. Ms. Tomora mentioned a strategic plan update that's been going on. That is the time to talk about these changes in years and changes to the named projects go into that strategic plan. My staff and I have been talking to the executive director already about that. I agree with Ms. Tomora on the, the Betaravia and Broadway project. We've been talking about moving that one forward. So we're, we're also working on this. And I'll continue to work with Ms. Tomora on the other items also. So that's, that's why it doesn't show up here is because they're, these are local road maintenance projects, not the named projects, the regional projects.
So the regional projects, those are included in, again, the SB CAG regional plan?
Right.
But the, but are we receiving monies to do that work locally?
So we don't have to program that money? That, that is already approved and allocated? And she's right, it's in a specific year in that strategic plan. So the overall board would need to make a vote to change anything in that, for those named projects. So that's why we're working with the SB CAG staff on any of those changes. So that, we could, we can make recommendations, but we, the SB CAG board overall has to make those changes.
Yeah. You know, I really think it's really important to move it up because all of the money right now has been, been spread down south, you know, on the 101, and we know that. And so we haven't done anything up here for quite a while with money. But this is where the housing is going to be going on up here, the growth is going to be going on up here, and I think it's just really important for us to push this because we know it takes a long time to get it done, and so it's not going to get done in just a few years. So I think it's really important to do that.
And if I could just say one thing to Kevin, thank you for that explanation. I realize that there's two different things happening here. It just so happened that they converged at one meeting and then the staff report showed up the next. And so, you know, if you go ahead and adopt this tonight, it is your local money that you're going to spend in the next five years. I think a separate message needs to be sent to SB CAG and that staff that Santa Maria can't wait for 28, 2028 or 2031 for these improvements. They need to be moved forward soon in their strategic plans.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Any other questions? Any questions here? I'll bring this back to the council for discussion and a motion.
I'd like to make, if there's no more discussion?
Any further discussion?
Mayor, I just want to, I'd like to say that I think that Mrs. Tomora's idea, and this has kind of been on my mind, once we have a full buildout at Enos Ranch, there's going to be a significant, I would hope, a significant increase in traffic with, with the vendors that are going to be on Bradley there. And this, this off-ramp, even though it's, we're still looking at five years more away, is going to be a tremendous relief for getting some traffic off of Betaravia for all the traffic that, that is, is being, there's necessary to travel between Betaravia and, and the next off-ramp. So I think it's important that we get it going.
You know, you, you talk about, for instance, Union Valley Parkway, and we had, there was opposition to that, and that was on the books for years.
Twenty-two years, I believe.
I think it was, was it longer than that? I thought it was longer than that.
I, I remember commenting on it, saying that we should take it off the books or finish it.
I know, I know Mayor Lavenino didn't ever think that was going to happen in his lifetime. But that was on the books for so long and there was even opposition to it. And once it was finished, it was just like all that traffic just sort of dispersed and people were, you know, I talk to people all the time. I say, how do you like it? Well, they like it until the people are speeding down there, and then that, that's another problem. But it really, really dissipated that traffic there.
I think we'll find that it's a, it's a great help once this interchange goes in.
Ms. Waterfield?
Well, and you know, I, on the back of Councilmember Cordero, it does have to get sped up because we've got a school going in, we have a multi-apartment unit going in, and just sitting on Betaravia and College. And if you want to make that left-hand turn, and this has nothing to do with the freeway, if you want to make that left-hand turn, I counted, that light only allows for five cars, no, four cars, then the fifth one is yellow, and then the other three are red. So we need to do the timing on, on that turn because it's going to be, it's going to be a tough turn because we're going to have moms, you know, taking kids to school and all, all of these other things going on, especially with that apartment unit, and they're going to go everywhere. I mean, they're going to hit 101, they're going to go into Santa Maria, they're, you know, it's just going to be, it's going to be crazy.
And don't forget we're doing our general plan too, so all this is, at one time, they're going to have to weave it together.
Absolutely. So that's, that's very important, and thank you, Ms. Tomora, for bringing that up.
Do I have a motion here?
Yes. Madam Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving Measure A five-year local program of projects for fiscal years 2020, 2021 through 2024, 2025, and certifying that the city of Santa Maria will provide sufficient funding in the 2020, 2021 budget to meet the Measure A maintenance of effort requirement.
Second.
Okay. Were you going to add on the, the Highway 101, 135 and the McCoy study?
That's part of the routine, right?
Oh, Mr. Stillwell?
No, we don't, no.
No.
No, the distinction, the distinction Director McHugh made was we have the local funding and the regional funding.
That's fine. Okay, great. Okay. Was there a second?
Second.
Motion, and a second. Any further discussion? Harry Nunn, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. McHugh.
Thanks, Lori, for bringing all that up.
Our next item is a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will receive and file the quarterly financial report for the second quarter ending December 31, 2019.
And our staff report is to be given by Director of Finance, Ms. Harvey.
Thank you. Good evening, honorable mayor, councilmembers, staff, and public. Tonight, I will briefly present the quarterly financial report for the second quarter into December 31, 2019. I will be primarily reviewing the general fund, including Measure U and the enterprise funds. The beginning general fund balance of $10,071,000 is the unedited balance at July 1, 2019. Regarding city revenues, through the second quarter of the year, sales tax receipts are just under $173,000 or 1.4% less than the second quarter last year. The slight decrease is due to lower sales in general consumer goods and fuel and service station categories. This decline in sales was offset by payments received from the state for allocation corrections for prior periods. NHIS revenues is at nearly 63% of budget at just over $626,000 with an annual budget of $1 million. This compares to receipts through the second quarter of last year of $881,000 or a decrease of approximately $255,000. The majority of NHIS material received during the first six months of 2019, '20 came from Chevron's San Luis Obispo Tank Farm Project. Material from Chevron's Union Vicente lease and Shell Oil's Canyon lease were also received during this period. The city did not receive any NHIS material in January, and staff expects a decline in activity during the winter months. Although the tank farm project is expected to continue in 2020, it is hard to predict when hauling will resume after the rainy season, and as a result, revenues are uncertain for the second half of 2019. Excuse me, 2019, '20. Permit revenue is at 66% of budget or approximately $1.7 million, and it is about $557,000 more than the second quarter of last year. Two significant projects at Enos Ranch, the Eastham Apartments and Honda, combined with the steady commercial construction activity overall, account for these increases. Turning to the general fund expenditures, they are about 45.6% of budget and include nearly $3 million in salary savings. Those savings exceed the $2.2 million in salary savings that were included in the 2019, '20 budget to help address the budget deficit. However, expenditures are still projected to exceed revenue estimates by about $1.5 million. Concerning Measure U, revenues through the second quarter are slightly over budget at 54.1% or just over $10.4 million. Expenditures are at 36% of budget or approximately $2.7 million under budget. The majority of the budget under run is due to the time it takes to hire 57 new positions, in particular, those in police and fire. Also, some recreation and parks and library service enhancements will begin later in the year. Staff anticipated, and the city council authorized as part of the 1920 mid-cycle budget, $900,000 of salary savings to establish reserve funds for future economic downturns. On October 15, 2019, and November 5 of 2019, the city council also authorized a total of $655,000 of salary savings be used to fund specific projects or activities in police, fire, and recreation and parks. Through December, 93% of Measure U expenditures have been spent on public safety, 3% on youth services, and 4% on quality of life. As for the enterprise funds, the water and wastewater fund revenues exceeded expenditures by $2.2 million, which is about $2 million less than last year. The significance variance is due to nearly $1.5 million increase in state water payments. Expenditures include the semi-annual debt service payment of $746,000 of interest on the 2012 refunding bonds. The remaining principal and interest payment of $3.9 million will occur in the third quarter of fiscal year. For the solid waste fund, revenues exceeded expenditures by $198,000. Operational expenses are about 11.8% or $1.1 million greater than previous year, while revenues are up 4.1% or $472,000. The transit fund, second quarter revenues are less than expenditures by $275,000. The capital expenditures include $457,000 for the purchase of a bus on the behalf of the city of Guadalupe. Those expenditures will be reimbursed to the city from federal grants in the city of Guadalupe. Fair revenues for the quarter are just over $403,000, and their fare box ratio is 26%. That concludes my staff report, and I'm available to answer questions.
Are there any questions? Are there any questions from the council? No questions? Madam Clerk, do we have any written correspondence or requests to speak?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
So I'll bring them back to the council for any discussion. Anyone want to discuss anything? Okay.
For curiosity, for the, who does the, do we have a company out there doing the river mining and reclamation activities? Is that coast?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Waterfield? Yes, we periodically do mine the river out near the landfill to provide daily cover and then finish cover as well. That project was done this year by Cal Portland Construction.
Okay. Interesting. Okay, thank you. Okay. Then thank you, Mrs. Harvey, and the report has been received and will be filed. Thank you. Next item is a report by City Manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. The next meeting of the city council is March 3. We have a couple items on the agenda. One is the annual report on Measure U. That'll be presented to the council from the Measure U Oversight Committee. And we also have the second annual presentation from the Chamber of Commerce and the Visitors' Bureau of the craft cocktail contest results. And so, yeah, so you'll remember last year was interesting to see what the different ideas were, and we look forward to seeing this year's winner. They plan to announce it at the council meeting. It gets a lot of fanfare that way. And also, before I conclude, I want to recognize Todd Tugle in the back there with the gray suit. He's our new deputy fire chief, and he's been here for about three weeks, so you'll see his familiar face either in a suit or in his uniform as he's working around with fire administration. And we are fortunate to have him here, and we look forward to working with Todd.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Tugle. Okay. Mr. Cordero, you want to start?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the 10th, I attended the economic forecast that was sponsored out there by Air Energy that took place over at Hancock College. And in brief, it was a positive message. It was a message that, that the presenter had no reason to think that there was going to be the bottom falling out of anything. He forecasted the economy is in good shape, the same as they did out at the forecast out at, in Sauvage a month or so ago. So it was, it was positive, and we appreciated that, that information. On the 11th, I was at the, the new trucking facility that's going to be out on East Stowe Road where kind of Stowe and Hanson is. That was a fun to attend. It kind of sounds like they're going to be doing a lot of business. It'll not only be selling new tractor-trailer rigs, but it'll also be servicing them there. And it's, it's a company that's already working in Santa Maria. They're just going to be expanding, and their home base is over in the San Joaquin Valley. On the 12th, I have to say that I was at the, the awards luncheon for the police department. And the, the police department did a great job of selling their people. Chief, my hat's off to you, and of course, being sensitive as, as a past member of, of your department. It was great to see and hear some of the backstories. I can't recall, I've been out going on 12 years now, and I can't recall ever feeling like, oh, really? It just brought back so many memories of what you guys are doing. And I, and I come up with a rather simple analysis on why we do such a great job at the police department. And I think that it's probably because it's nothing more than a reflection of the management that you provide and that you've chosen to surround yourself with, with the commanders. And it's just a reflection of that, that these men and women, for the most part, are doing an outstanding job for us on the police department. And it was a real pleasure and honor to be there and listen to the stories that took place over the last year. On the 14th, I had the honor of, of attending the goal-setting for, it was actually a council meeting. We had some public show up there at the Santa Maria Inn. And it was nice to see that there was a lot of continuity on the part of the council, and everybody was commenting that one of the things we need to do is to keep our finances in mind in order so we can stay in business. So that was, it was great that we're all on the same page there. And it was, it was interesting to see the things that were coming out of it. And today, I had the opportunity to meet with members of Jordan Cunningham's office to discuss some business that, that we might be doing in the not-too-distant future, meaning the next several years. And that would be it for me, Mayor.
Thank you. Dr. Moats?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On February 12, I also attended the awards police luncheon. And on Valentine's Day, remotely, I attended the Santa Maria Goal Setting Committee meeting. And again, it seemed, as Mr. Cordero said, there was kind of a unanimity about what our goals should be. Number one being keeping the city financially solvent.
Speaking to your microphone, please.
Keeping the city financially solvent. Keeping the city financially solvent. And number two, planning for the future and providing affordable housing and bicycle paths.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Waterfield?
It was, it was an honor last year when the Chamber of Commerce handed over to the Santa Maria Police Council the task of doing the police awards. And I could not be more proud of the 230 people that attended to watch this wonderful display of what a fine department we have of police officers. They've always been close to my heart because I come from a law enforcement family and they always will be close to my heart. But being able to, you know, work it and see the output of the entire community is great. And we are going to be working on our 12th annual comedy dinner and golf tournament that's going to be coming up on June, Monday, June the 8th. So you guys need to mark your calendars for that one too and I'll be bringing more information in regards to that. But it was fantastic. I also attended the goal setting meeting for half a day. And I met with a constituent in regards to a problem he was having and I met with the Community Development Department and we seemed to have gotten that resolved. So everything looks good so far.
Ms. Soto?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On February 5, I attended the elected leaders forum to address homelessness where I was elected vice chair for the county. On February 13, I attended the Women in Government Panel where I spoke. And on February 14, I joined you all in our goal setting workshop, which was so much fun to spend Valentine's Day with you all.
January 22, I attended the Marion Foundation Board of Directors meeting that evening in the firefighters' protection appreciation night at Elks. On the 24th, I attended a land use law and planning conference. January 27, I spoke to my team leadership program recipients. And then later that afternoon, met with Tom Habashi of the Monterey Bay Community Power with the city of Guadalupe and the city of Grover Beach. January 30, I did the swearing-in at the Boys and Girls Club Annual Meeting and Luncheon. The 31st of January, did the Rick Le Meyer Show in the morning, then headed up to Paso Robles to do the Central Coast Housing Working Group meeting. The governor of California has asked that we have a mayor of a large city, a mayor of a small city and a supervisor from each county. And so I'm the mayor of the large city. Ariston Julian is the mayor of the small city and Joan Hartman is the supervisor. And so we were at this working group up in Paso, but that was the first meeting and it was basically introductions and seeing what our, what we're going to get done really. February 1, I attended the CADCA National Leadership Forum. On February 10, I attended the 2020 Economic Forecast at Hancock College. I think one of the interesting things that came out of that was that everyone is having, there's, the job market is so tight that everyone is having problems getting people hired because getting the fit with the education and the job, and that's something that we're working on here in Santa Maria because we see a great need for that education and be able to put people in jobs. On the 11th of February, did the groundbreaking for the California Truck Centers, which is a dealership in large trucks. It's just like you'd have a dealership for Toyota or Honda. You've got these large Daimler, made by Daimler, trucks. On the 30th, and then on the 14th, Friday the 14th, I did the city council goal setting workshop remotely. And I guess that's it. Any other things from the dais? If not, thank you. This meeting is adjourned.
Rhonda? Would you see that they get this in the city of Oakland?